Welcome to the Cupertino City Council Meeting. Today is May 2nd.
Recording in progress.
And 6:45 PM, we're calling the meeting to order. If you are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Fruin.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here.
Thank you. And the council held a closed session, and I'd like to, City Attorney, to report on the closed session.
Thank you, Mayor Way. So, the council heard two items in closed session today and took an action to authorize the City Attorney to file a cross complaint in the action Sharma versus City of Cupertino.
Thank you, City Attorney. And so, we are going to move to ceremonial items. Number three. It is a proclamation declaring May as Affordable Housing Month. Affordable housing is one of the cornerstones of democracy and is a basic need and right of everyone. And the City of Cupertino wishes to heighten public awareness of fair housing and fair treatment of communities in the region. And the City of Cupertino joins Silicon Valley at Home in supporting affordable housing efforts and wishes to focus public attention on May as Affordable Housing Month and encourage every person and community organization to support housing efforts and to collaborate in finding viable, creative solutions to increase housing affordability for everyone. Right now, I'd like to invite the face of Silicon Valley at Home, Emily N. Ramos, and also a council member with Mountain View to join us and to present a proclamation. And council members and city managers, please.
Emily, please come to the stage. Sage, please. And you're ready to move. Let me just say a few words.
Thank you. On behalf of Silicon Valley at Home, I would like to thank the City of Cupertino for this proclamation for Affordable Housing Month. This year's theme is building communities, and by building communities, we are finding ways to make sure that our members and our neighbors and our longtime community members and new friendly new neighbors are able to come and stay in the cities that we love and work hard for. So, thank you so much for this proclamation, and thank you for your leadership in recognizing this.
And Emily, I want personally, thank you for your personal passion and SB at Home and all SB at Home does for affordable housing. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, so let's take a picture together. Come close by.
Just kind of. I'll go in for a few. Are we to go? Move that way. Move that way. Emily, you're in the center. We'll be with you. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
As part of tonight's ceremonial matters, we have two proclamations that have been issued but are not being presented here. So, I would like to acknowledge them. First, I'd like to take a minute to recognize the month of May is Asian American and Pacific Islander, otherwise known as AAPI Heritage Month. So many Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have contributed to our country and our city's economy and supplement the unique character of our nation. The AAPI community has produced leaders, scientists, teachers, and so many more people who have also campaigned and fought for a fairer and more just society for all Americans. We recognize and celebrate the contributions that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made to our city, state, and nation. In addition, I would also like to recognize National Public Works Week, which is May 21st to 27th this year. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital to the public health, quality of life, and well-being of our residents in the City of Cupertino and beyond. I'd like to recognize and thank our public works employees here in Cupertino for all of their hard work in maintaining, improving, and protecting our city's parks, public facilities, and much more for our community. So, thank you very much for our public works employees. Okay, so we are moving to postponement and order of the day. So, any postponement from the council? I actually like to see if my fellow council members, I'd like to make a recommendation and motion to postpone Consent Number 11. The reasons I'd like to postpone and table it are twofold. First, you know, we are in the process of doing housing elements, and I do believe we need to have a holistic view of the city. What are these semi-rural streets and have an overview of the semi-rural streets so that we can decide which ones can move forward and which ones we need to reconsider in the housing element. The second one is, I would like to know the impact from a potential Carmen Bridge project with this semi-rural destination. So, I'm gonna move that we tabled Number 11 for a future date until we have a little bit more information and where our housing element is moving forward. If I can get a second from a fellow council member, I would appreciate it. If not, we can keep it on the consent and calendar. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And we have a move and second, I'd like to open for discussions, questions, discussions, any comments. Yes, go ahead. Councilmember Chow.
So, we are not supposed to have substantive discussion on this item, right? City Attorney, it seems the mayor was already going into it too much.
This is semi-rural destination, Number 11. Consent agenda, Number 11.
I know. Whether to postpone or not, we, it feels like the mayor is already getting into some substantive issues with this agenda item. Is that even allowed?
I think the mayor was stating her rationale for not hearing the item today. I would agree that any further discussion wouldn't be appropriate unless we kept it on the agenda and provided the opportunity for public comment on the item.
Okay, so if no further discussion, just go for vote? Okay, so let's vote by light, please. Councilmember Moore?
Yes, I'd like to have a substitute motion that we do, if I need to do this, that we hear the item and not postpone it because we have already had this item come to the City Council before, and they've already polled the entire neighborhood to see what their opinions are on the matter.
Okay, so substitute motion is to put it out of consent?
That works, yes.
Okay, so may I have a second, please?
Second, I think the, I think we, the neighborhood deserves to be heard, at least today, since this is on the agenda. So, not even hearing them seems to be doing a disservice to the neighborhood.
Okay, so we have.
You can deny the request, of course.
We have a substitute motion, motion by Councilmember Moore and second by Councilmember Chow. And if there's no more discussion, let's vote on it by light.
The substitute motion carries with Fruin voting no.
I actually okay with the substitute motion. So, okay, so we'll keep it on the, so we're gonna move to oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons.
Oh, this is not consented yet, right? So, I pulled an item, yeah?
So, this is oral communication. For meetings is reserved for persons wishing to address the council any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion, including information items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any cards here or Zooming?
Yes, Mayor, we have three speaker cards in Community Hall, and I see one hand raised on Zoom, so we'll start with the speakers in Community Hall. Sandy James, followed by Brooke Ezit, followed by Jennifer Griffin.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. My name is Sandy James, and I am a former mayor as well as a longtime resident of Cupertino. And I'm here tonight to acknowledge and praise our Public Works Department. I've been involved in many ways in this city, and all of us that live here see the work that the Public Works Department does every single day, wherever we go in the city. They are absolutely outstanding. I'd just like to give you two personal examples that I am really touched by. The first one is the Veterans Memorial. You know that I was the co-founder of the Veterans Memorial, the city staff from the very beginning. When we dedicated that in 2007 has been, they sort of adopted that memorial. They take very good care of it. The tiles are always nice and clean, the lawn looks beautiful around it. People come all the time, sometimes just to visit someone in their family or a loved one who they have a paver for. Other times, they bring their children to teach them about history. I could tell you all kinds of wonderful stories around that memorial. But tonight, I want to acknowledge the staff that has really helped us in every way, whenever we need any help with a new boulder being installed or in any way, they're there, they help us in numerous ways. And more importantly to me, they take great pride in it and they take personal care of it. And that's an example. In addition to that, the former Public Works Director, Roger Lee, some of you knew Roger, he retired about two years ago at the same time that my project manager passed. And so, I took Roger to lunch, and I asked him if he would be willing, in retirement, to be a project manager for any additions or any changes and improvements that needed to be made, and he very willingly said yes. And so, he's doing that now, working with the staff. Obviously, they work very well together. My second example, we see every day when we come to City Hall or the library, that Public Works employee, Bill Bridge is his name, has been there. He was there when I was sitting up where you are, and since I live in this neighborhood now and walk a lot, I see him every day. And it is astounding the amount of pride he takes in his work, how much time he spends on it, and we all enjoy it. Every time we go to the library, we go to City Hall, or we just walk in the City Hall, city center area. So, he's just another example of the outstanding service that all of our Public Works employees give us as well as the management team. So, I'm just here to say thank you to all of them, from myself and probably from the rest of the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Next, we have Brooke Ezit, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Rhonda Frye. Welcome, Brooke.
Thank you. Good evening. I would like to address the majority of this council about focusing all of one's resources on persecuting people whose only behavioral pattern involves reading, thinking, and being honest. Do you know what happens when you persecute people who are doing the work and continue to do so exclusively? When you become tasked with doing the work, well, things stop working because no matter how much those doing the persecuting and only the persecuting pretend to understand the problem and not working for a solution but pretend to work for a solution, this does not create solutions, this in fact creates more problems. Case in point, housing is expensive around here. We need better transit, and we need inclusionary zoning. We have to deliver temporary housing for unhoused people because people are dying out there. These are not easy things to do, but there are real solutions. Yes, they require work and thought. They require real conversations with the development community, some really difficult conversations. What is not a solution is taking money from development interests and then saying whatever it is they want you to say, or whatever it is that you think they want you to say. Why is this problematic? Why does reading, thinking, and being honest actually yield better results? That's an interesting question. Reading, thinking, and being honest yield better results because that's how you arrive at solutions rather than schemes and cover-ups. That's how you talk to anyone with care and effectiveness, whether you call them a friend, a relative, neighbor, or stakeholder. That's how you work effectively through any issue. If there's a disagreement, then share the perspective, appreciate the thinking, don't smother it. That's how you earn and build respect. If you instead adopt tactics of smear and not doing the work, then maybe you feel some surge of victory if the tactics work for a cycle, but really, what really happens? The quality of thinking erodes to the point of being absent, economies fail, people who do the work get attacked for doing the work, our problems get worse. Does that sound familiar? Please start doing the work. And honestly, what was the point of removing the two-thirds majority required to call a question? Do you realize that is about building consensus? It literally has never been a problem, and the majority of the council eliminated. That was incredibly disappointing. Please do your work. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke. Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Rhonda Frye. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, and I wanted to speak tonight on one or two items. I'm very, very concerned with how the housing element is rolling out in California. As I had stated in the Planning Commission last Tuesday, it has become aware that 50% of the cities in Southern California have not been certified by HCD for their housing element, and this is for the last two years. HCD has been running the cities in Northern California ragged in a hamster wheel cycle with no way off. We're being threatened with builder's remedy edicts from the state. The governor and Rob Vonta are going after a suburb of Sacramento for some reason, just as they are going after Huntington Beach. They appear to not like cities, which is very strange since Gavin came out of San Francisco. I am still trying to figure that one out. I'm gonna talk for a minute about SB 423. I believe personally that the housing element is something that is supposed to keep the cities busy so that they don't watch to see what housing bills are being churned out at the Sacramento level by Senator Weiner and some other folks. I've been dubious about the housing element since the beginning. I said it was a dog and pony show two years ago. It is still a complete circus. SB 423 was introduced by Senator Weiner and some other folks on February 13th of this year, and it is a bill that is going to extend SB 35 beyond 2025. I am a member of livable California, catalyst for local control, and another group that is running a potential initiative next year. SB 423 is one of the worst bills to have been introduced. Mr. Weiner has about four more years of his 11 years that he's allowed to be in the legislature. I understand that he wants to run for, I believe he wants to go to the state, to the federal level. But 423 is the coffin, is the lid on the coffin. Our complete liberty to have local control and to live in our cities is going under with this horrendous bill. I'm bringing it up because the main concern is that the coastal areas are going to be inundated with housing. It leaves us open and vulnerable to builder's remedy, and HCD, I predict, will not certify us. They will not certify Cupertino.
Thank you, Jennifer.
It is a hamster wheel. Thank you.
And our last speaker is Rhonda Frye. Welcome, Rhonda.
Hi, I have an overhead this evening. First, I'd like to follow in Sandy James's footsteps here. Shout out to Public Works. I was lucky enough to attend the Audit Committee, and there was an audit of how the building project was handled with the library, and Susan Michael did an absolute stellar, over-the-top job. You know, the auditors could only find a little, couple of little nitpicks, which, and, you know, we learned from having that audit. We know now that the city's doing a great job, so shout out to Susan Michael. The other thing I learned at the Audit Committee was that we have $150 million or so in long-term savings, and now the city intends to move toward liquidating that and with respect to the CD TFA. The other thing I'd like to mention is a big shout out to Kitty Moore as well, because without Kitty, we would not have the transparency that we do today in looking at some of the accounts payable. We now see the accounts that the accounts payable coming from. We didn't used to see that, and I'm so appreciative of it, and no wonder that, why Kitty was, has been voted by her peers to have had leadership positions on the VTA previously. Anyway, what's going on with the budget? So, the first slide here, this is showing per capita income for sales tax in comparing other cities. So, this is Cupertino. You can see that Cupertino's pretty much gone much higher than our peers in San Jose, Los Altos, Mountain View. I think I've shown you this slide before. And so, I really wanna see how we can live within our means. I know that on April 13th, y'all were talking about potentially selling our water rights. I want you to know that that's something that we voted for in 1960, for those of you who were around to vote, or even living here. And it's troubling that that would be considered to be sold because it's a publicly traded company that it would go to. We would have no control. The other thing is, please don't consider selling our open space, Blackberry Farm. Again, this is something that we voted for. It's interesting, any of you guys who pay or wear the utility users tax, that was initiated through the purchase of Blackberry Farm in 1990. And it's very clear in the vote, the acquisition and preservation of Blackberry Farm as open space. For me, that's a third rail issue. The other one is with respect to Bloomberg News, there's another article out there. I'd really like to see more transparency coming out of this city with respect to what comes with clawback and timeframes. Thank you.
And Rhonda was our final speaker in Community Hall. We will move to Zoom. We have three hands raised. We have San R., followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Call and User One. Welcome, San.
Hello, Mayor V., Vice Mayor Mohan, and City Council Members. I would like to acknowledge the great work done recently by the Cupertino Sister Cities Organization, and specifically the Cupertino-Sincho Sister Cities Association. After a hiatus of over four years, CHSCA successfully planned and executed a fantastic delegation from Cupertino to the sister city of Sincho, Taiwan. The trip was conducted smoothly, flawlessly, and thanks to the efforts of the many volunteers and chaperones who tirelessly and selflessly gave so much of their own personal time for the cause. Their efforts coupled with the sponsorship and support of the city, as well as the travel personally by Mayor V., made for a most memorable visit from Cupertino to Sincho, Taiwan, for our youth of Cupertino that were lucky to witness this program. These events form the history of our city. To understand this, one would have seen the photos of Sister City visiting back to the 1980s during the recently conducted Terry Blossom Festival. The Sister City program is unique to our city. It is meaningful and builds bonds that last a lifetime between the youth of Cupertino and our city, and make them realize the value of participating in the civic process and giving back. It is a special and unique differentiator for Cupertino compared to the neighboring cities in Santa Clara County. None of this would have been possible without the effort of the leads for the visit this year to Sincho. I would like to explicitly call out and give a shout out to the contributions of the following people. Mr. Angelo Noguera, a teacher from Kennedy Middle School. Ms. Janice Sung, president of CHSCA. Ms. Shia Chinglin, principal at West Valley Elementary and VP of CHSCA. Ms. Angela Chen, VP of CHSCA. Dr. Jennifer Lashier, principal at Moore Elementary and teacher and chaperone. Each of the above members served tirelessly for week and month, culminating in 10 days of long, hard work for them, but giving lifetime memories for the students that traveled. For that, the school kids that traveled and their families that experienced the program will be forever grateful. I encourage the city to similarly revive the program for other sister cities and ensure funding is maintained and expanded for the sister city visit. I request the city to expand the sister city programs to be symmetric in their eligibility for high school students. As you may be aware, the city is not eligible for high school students. Kindly expand the program to ensure high school students are eligible. Finally, I want to thank Mayor V. for our travel. It makes a difference, and I hope to see Vice Mayor Mohan and other council members join in future trips in the near future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, San. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Call and User One. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. I want to address the budget survey that was posted on the city website. It closes on May 31st, but the city is going to present the results on May 17. This doesn't make sense. Why bother taking the survey after that date? This approach impacts the results presented, because after you've presented it, other people can just go and skew it. So, it doesn't make sense. Either close it on the 16th or don't present on the 17th. Also, the survey is lopsided and narrow. When reducing expenditures, everyone goes for the big first items, hiring freeze, eliminate any project that's not necessary, such as some of the CIP projects. Don't start new ones. Reduce maintenance costs by maybe going to 70% instead of 80 on the street code. It doesn't allow comments or ideas. There's no place to, we have these brilliant people in Cupertino, they have brimming with ideas. Please let them give you some. There might be something that sparks a big change. To the audience, if you're going to take the survey, do it by May 16th, because I don't think your voice is gonna be heard after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And our final speaker for oral communications tonight will be Call and User One. Welcome, Call and User One.
So, council and members, yes, I've been listening to the other half, so I just, somewhat quite a bit of them were not happy about states or the other government, the oversight and the over, um, the, this, this small city. And we have actually, the place right here is a city actually overreach to their own residents, strictly with the ones without the knowledge, the building skills. And the ones, I saw them, from nation before, they come at the inboard, at the wall, and everywhere actually is open to the space, and it still comes out only a few millimeter. And also, three people, four, several, um, destined five feet and six shelves, they can't, sorry, total four feet, well, because it was higher than neighborhoods, they add another, because it was supposed to be higher than neighborhoods, it's four feet becoming a six four. So, that's, that's the overreach action, just covering the city alone. It doesn't need a solve itself, and then you can talk about how the state and the education is trying to do that to, to our small cities. And all the people, whoever made that decision, they've come for it. And also, whoever don't have the building background and tried to make that decision, strictly, and all the ones thought not, don't need it, there was the building department. And later on, we actually get from it, we actually get neighborhood consent, not even a nuisance at all, and those people don't have any background, it's called, can't even from the, from the street, only ninety some square foot, and they need it taken away twice, the landing as well. And so, and the reason they also saying they can't get the landing back because they can't ask the city for any money, but they're willing to pay all this, turning this huge amount of saves. So, all these things need their come for it, and all those people, whoever's doing that need a true self. I see a self. need to prove self, actually a self, make any decision. So, hold on, I send the meeting back to you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Call and User One. And Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'd like to thank all the people who made the public comments. Thanks for your time and effort and passion. So I'm going to move to Consent Calendar, Items Number Four to Eleven. Do we, in addition to Number Eleven, do we have other items that's being pulled?
Yes, Mayor, we have one item pulled by Councilmember Chow. That's Item Number Eight.
Item Number Eight. So we have Eight and Eleven that's being pulled. Okay, so I'd like to open Public Comment for Items Number Four, Five, Six, Seven, Nine, and Ten. These are for Public Comments, not for Eight or Eleven, but for the rest of the Consent Calendar that's not being pulled. So do we have any cards?
So I'm going to go ahead and go to Zoom first while I sort the cards.
Okay, sure.
So we have one speaker on Zoom, Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. I want to speak to the, I mean, this is a lot of money, and I understand that a lot of this money is coming from already designated pots. But Item Number Ten, Curves, Gutters, and ramps, is one and a half million dollars. And to me, it seems like, I, I know in a normal year, you could just go as, as planned, but it's not a normal year, and it won't be for another 10 years. So reducing, only doing higher priority curves, ramps, and gutters would be the prudent way to go. Cut the, cut the budget by 20%. Have them, in the report, they didn't even list which ones they were going to do. I know Vice Mayor Mohan asked, and they have a list, and they're probably prioritized. So cut the, cut the lowest 20, cut the lowest 25, reduce the cost. Also, the garbage and construction, Item Number Twenty Twelve, you're increasing our costs, not yours, and right now, people are being laid off.
Um, excuse me, we're not talking about Twelve, right? Twelve is not on Consent, so when Twelve's come out of action, please raise your hand and speak to Twelve. Thank you.
Thank you for telling me that. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so we will now move back to those who have submitted speaker cards for Community Hall. Jennifer Griffin would like to speak on Items Seven and Eight. Jennifer, if you'd like to come up, and Lisa Warren would be next.
So only to be on Seven? The Eight has been pulled, so we're going to have a separate Public Comment on Ages.
My apologies.
You know, I think I'm starting to get this after six months, but I still get really confused. Okay, yeah, Eight, I had asked, I had, I think, sent several emails asking it to be pulled. It has been, so I'm still confused about what we're doing. I understand, you know, I've been coming here 23 years, so I, believe me, I know this agenda by heart. So I don't know why we're discussing Number Seven, but that's what you guys want to do. We'll do that. So I want to make sure on Seven, that Cupertino is not having to shoulder more of the cost burden. Santa Clara is bigger than Cupertino. They have more money than Cupertino. They are probably not going through a budget issue like we are. And I, I just want to make sure that Cupertino is not going to get dragged through the weeds like they are by everyone. And I am really getting tired of having Mr. Bonta and the governor say bad things about my city. I am never voting for either of those two men again, and I didn't initially. Well, I did vote for Gavin, but I'm never voting for him again. And Mr. Bonta, I've never voted for him. I want to make sure that in this situation, that we are getting our bang for the buck. I, I, I think there was a problem the last time that this came up, that it seemed like Cupertino was having to give out a lot more money. You know, I like Santa Clara, but fair is fair. We have got to fight for our individual cities. And it's nice to have the Via Shuttle, but we do have buses, we do have, you can call cabs, you can have Lyft, you can have relatives take you places. Believe me, I spend a lot of my time taking people places, and it's my pride and joy to do that. But I really do not want Cupertino to get reamed. I don't want to find out five years from now that we were paying the bulk of this, and Santa Clara has gotten a free ride. Now, how's that for a segue? If you guys can make sure that we're not getting taken to town in a town car, then I will be very happy about this. I haven't taken Via, et cetera, et cetera, but I drive, okay? And I just, I have bad feelings about this. I really, really feel like we're being taken for a ride. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Mayor, for catching that. So, so seeing as Eight was moved, moved to after the, the Action Calendar, we have no more speaker cards in Community Hall. However, we have one hand raised on Zoom by San R. Welcome, San.
Hello, Mayor V. and City Council. I'd like to make a clarifying question or comment on Consent Calendar, Item Number, I believe it is Item Number Six on the hazardous waste collection program. It's not clear to me from the staff report if the cost is going to be passed on to the residents of Cupertino. I would like to request that if these costs are going to be passed on to the residents of Cupertino, that this not be approved. We have seen a continuous rise in our utility bill, and recology has continued to rise our, our prices, and I want to make sure that this is not another increase that we're going to get nickel and dimed on. So I request the City Council to please take a look at Item Number Six and understand what exactly it means to augment the funding by an additional $90,007.05. The staff report, I could not make out from that of those costs who were passed on in the form of additional fees on residents, and so I want to bring that to your attention. Thank you.
And thank you, San. And Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Can the staff answer the question, or show, can we have a staff get back to the resident about the, the Number Six?
We can have Public Works staff get back with the resident, absolutely.
Thank you very much. So we have Consent Calendar Eight and Eleven pulled. It is customary, it's going to become a separate action item, so we will have to take Public Comments. When it comes up, they will be placed after the action item. So right now, we have Consent Number Four, Five, Six, Seven, Nine, and Ten. I'd like to have a motion to approve the Consent Calendar, please, except Number Eight and Eleven.
I will move to approve the Consent Calendar, except for Items Eight and Eleven.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Second.
So it's being moved and seconded. Let's vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we're going to move to Action Item, which is Number Twelve. Consider a Request for Proposals for Garbage and Construction and Demolition Debris Disposition Services, Including Solicitation of Options to Process Garbage for Recovery of Organic and Other Recyclables. And do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor Way, we have a presentation prepared by Ursula and assisted by Public Works Director Chad Mosley. As we are setting up the presentation, anything that we want to brief the council, I'll turn over to Assistant City Manager Matt Morley.
Yeah, I'm sure Chad has a few introductory words that he wants to provide to start us off here, and then we'll get into the PowerPoint.
Thank you, City Council, Mayor Chad Mosley, Interim Director of Public Works. Ursula is going to present this item for all of you, and I met with most of you before this meeting. I appreciate your time, and hopefully, we've done a good job of answering your questions, and hopefully, Ursula's presentation will provide relevant information to, to the public today. So Ursula, if you'd like to start.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Way, council members. I'm Ursula Sirova, Environmental Programs Manager for the City of Cupertino. I'm here tonight to present on the topic of our need to establish a new agreement or agreements for disposition of the city's garbage and construction and demolition debris. Apologies. With us via Zoom is Peter Dibler from HF&amp;H, who is the consultant assisting us on this project, and my presentation should take about 10 minutes. So the City of Cupertino has two agreements to manage waste. One is the collection of materials, which residents and businesses see every week with the recology trucks circulating through the city, to service carts, bins, and construction debris boxes. The second agreement is with a landfill for disposal of the city's garbage and for processing and disposal of construction and demolition debris. The cost for both agreements is factored into the garbage rates paid by residents and While recology does collect all the materials, they also, through sub-agreements, arrange for processing of the green and blue cart materials. After recology collects those materials, the green cart organics are taken to recology's facility in San Jose, consolidated, and then are transferred to one of two facilities to be composted. Recyclables, like paper and containers placed in the blue cart, are taken to Green Waste in San Jose, where they are sorted and processed for sale. These arrangements are all managed by recology, as noted in our franchise agreement. They will continue unchanged, and they are not the topic of today's item. What is before us today is the material in the gray carts and bins. Currently, that material in the carts and bins, the gray ones, is collected by recology and then taken to Newby Island Landfill near Milpitas for direct disposal. Recology also takes construction and demolition debris to Newby Island, where it is sorted for recovery of usable materials, and then anything left over is disposed into the landfill. The city's agreement with Republic Services will soon be ending. We do have an extension to the agreement to take us through to November 2025, but we need to establish a new agreement before that time. To put a visual to this, we are now talking only about the materials in the gray carts and bins and in CND debris boxes. As noted on the previous slide, the city's garbage goes directly to the landfill, while material in construction and demolition debris boxes undergoes some processing to remove recyclable materials, and then the leftovers are landfilled. As we think about the construction and demolition debris and contemplate new agreements, we are interested in what kinds of diversion rates different facilities can achieve, as they each have different technology and recovery rates. As we think about the garbage, it is helpful to know what is in Cupertino's garbage. What are people placing in the gray carts and bins? This data is from detailed waste characterization studies done in 2018 and 2019 in Cupertino. Most notable is that about half of the garbage by weight from all three categories of customers is organics, meaning food, food-soiled paper, or other compostable materials. Organics left in the garbage will generate methane in the landfill, which is why the whole goal of state regulations created with SB 1383 is to keep the organics out of the landfill. Under the requirements of 1383, people in Cupertino have access to a green cart and are encouraged to sort properly. Some people will willingly do a good job sorting the organics and recyclables out, but other people will not. As we come to the end of our current agreement with Republic to dispose of materials at Newby Island Landfill, which has been in place since 1989, one of the big questions we can now ask ourselves is whether or not we want to send collected garbage to a material recovery facility, or MRF. A MRF can divert up to half or even more of incoming garbage, depending on the technology and processes. Because, as we saw on the previous slide, a lot of the material in our garbage is organics, such as food scraps and food-soiled paper, routing garbage through a MRF for processing is a recommended climate change mitigation strategy identified in the city's adopted Climate Action Plan, CAP 2.0, and would in fact accomplish Action Item W. 1.2. It would also be in alignment with the city's adopted zero-waste policy to, quote, "steadfastly work to expand collection and processing programs that result in materials being diverted from the landfill to their highest and best use." If Cupertino decided to send garbage to a material recovery facility, it would not remove or replace the green and blue carts and bins. Yard waste, food scraps, and food-soiled paper could still go into the green carts, where people are willing and able and encouraged to do so, and recyclable containers and clean paper would still go into blue carts. Mrfing would be a way to rescue usable organics and other recyclables erroneously thrown into the garbage and achieve greater material recovery before disposal. It could increase our diversion rates from around 58% to over 70%. Additional processing of our garbage to remove recyclables and compostables would increase the cost of service to ratepayers, both residents and businesses. The cost of disposal is just one part of the overall equation in determining the garbage service rates, but a preliminary evaluation of cost for sending garbage to a MRF could result in single-family residents with 32-gallon garbage service, which is the most common, paying an additional $5 to $8 a month, or about 7% to 15% more than they would if the garbage was sent directly to landfill without processing. In 2020, a survey was conducted of residents on topics relating to garbage, organics, and recyclables. One question asked about the willingness to pay more for materials to be sorted after collection. Results showed 43.2% of people would be willing to pay more for that service, 44.3 said they would not, and 12.4 did not know or did not answer. In order to gather available options, we're planning to issue an RFP to solicit proposals for three services: landfill disposals, CND debris processing and disposal, and garbage processing at a material recovery facility. The RFP will be designed to make sure as many organizations as possible can submit proposals, so that we can analyze the options and make recommendations. It should be noted that one facility may not be able to provide everything we want, so we may ultimately recommend entering into more than one agreement. We also want to make sure both public and private entities can respond. So what service providers are nearby? Here is a map of the service providers in our general area. Newby Island Landfill, where our garbage currently goes, is next to Milpitas, and then we can see that there are two other landfills in the South San Jose area, as well as two material recovery facilities. There are facilities up on the peninsula and in the East Bay and beyond, so we might receive proposals from those facilities as well. That said, we are conscientious that further travel distances could influence the overall climate impact. Once we get proposals, we'll evaluate them on a number of issues, including technical capabilities, location, and overall distance that material will travel, facility capacities, their compliance status, and how well any MRFs are accomplishing diversion. The RFP will note that we will be taking a total value approach to the best solutions for Cupertino, including the most cost-effective means in doing so. The conceptual timeline for this project is shown here. The launch of the RFP is expected in May or June, and then we anticipate three months for proposers to develop responses. These proposals would be reviewed and evaluated, and negotiations with the recommended providers will begin after that. As noted in the staff report, communications during this time of RFP can present challenges and perhaps invite unwanted requests, so we do want to call out our lobbying ordinance and the broader ethics code for government officials, and this will be incorporated into the RFP as well for proposers to abide by. It is recommended that if any proposer approaches you directly, that you direct their questions and inquiries to staff, as noted in the RFP. Our next steps are to issue the RFP, evaluate proposals, and make recommendations. The city's goals, as stated in the Zero-Waste Policy from 2017 and our Climate Action Plan, support ongoing efforts to minimize waste going to landfill, including routing garbage to be processed, but we are looking for guidance from council on that point in particular as we head into that process. And that concludes my slides, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, and I would like to have questions from council, please? If not, yeah, go ahead, Vice Mayor Mohan.
Ursula, I had a question. We, you are...
You are fairly certain that the rate per household will increase by $8 to $10 per month if the garbage is redirected to an MRF?
It's an educated guess from our consultant, based on their knowledge of the whole industry and the way the rates are structured. But yes, that's their estimate.
Okay, so we would really only know, it could be more, it could be less, depending on the RFPs, right?
Correct.
Okay, so this is something that we could consider again after we receive the RFP responses?
Certainly, cost will be one of the things we'll really be looking at closely. But we wouldn't, yeah, it would be negotiations.
And if you wouldn't mind, council will be seeing any negotiated contracts prior to approval. So with those negotiations, we'll be back with numbers. And at that point in time, you can decide based on the cost to the residents. Today, we're just looking for kind of general direction as to, policy direction, as to should be, kind of go out and look at the material recycling facility as an additional option above and beyond the services that we already provide Cupertino.
Okay, thank you. Should we have other council members, please?
First of all, thank you very much for the briefing the other day. I found it very helpful. There was a slide that you had with respect to the survey as to whether or not residents would be willing to pay more or pay less. And I didn't notice at the time and did today that it was taken in 2020. Do you recall, considering that 2020 was a rather unusual year, when in 2020 that might have happened?
It was earlier in the year. It was part of our recology franchise renegotiation process. And so it was actually probably conducted in 2019.
Got it, okay, thank you.
So apologies for that.
Joe?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I thank you for considering this. I think it's always, it's a small price to pay to improve on how we process our garbage. My question is, so with this, but then besides the $5 to $8, we also expect the garbage fee, you say, to increase in addition to the $5 to $8, right? Do you have some idea? So that would be from recology, the current service they might increase?
Right, so this is kind of a big complicated ball of things, but all else being equal, that one piece of sending to a material recovery facility or not would be that additional amount, the $5 to $8 estimated. We are going into a fourth-year cost-based adjustment with recology, where we're going to review the rates and bring those before council for approval. That's built into the franchise agreement, so.
So, from what I read, even with the amount of recyclables that we produce, in general, only 5% actually gets recycled. And the capacity of these, a lot of these recycle processors are very limited, so a lot of them couldn't get processed and still went to the landfill. So I'm just curious, it's always good to, with this program, we will be able to produce more recyclables, but the cost of processing recyclables is increasing because of the capacity challenges, and many of them don't even get processed. So I'm curious, how would this help if the current recyclables we produce can even get processed today?
So our source-separated recyclables that go in the green and the blue carts, I mean, those are going to facilities and getting recycled. I mean, I know nationwide, we hear some very grim rates on recyclables.
They're supposed to get recycled.
But I think, I mean, what we hear from green waste and from recology on the organics is that they are getting recycled. So this would just be, if we sent materials to a material recovery facility, it would be pulling more things out to recover.
So they are getting recycled, because I read multiple sources that they say there are a lot of challenges with separating the different kinds of plastic, as if they cannot be, many of them are not cleaned, that if not separated properly, there are a lot of challenges to actually recycle them.
That's true. Plastics particularly can be problematic. There's much higher recyclability for metals, paper, and that's a lot of what we recycle as well.
So the MRF will help probably separate more plastics out, but then they likely won't be washed? And would how, what's the recyclability for those kinds?
The technology at the material recovery facilities varies, but they do have ways to, they use magnets, they use blowers, they use robotics and imaging to pull out different types of materials, including plastics. And so as much as they can pull out that's in good shape, they will. They're not going to wash everything first and then select it. It'll, you know, have to be pretty well-prepared for the machine to recognize it or the people to pull it out.
And if I may, one of the biggest things that we're looking at with this, with the material recycling facilities is organics. We're trying to pull organics out of the landfill, because they produce methane. And as shown in the slide that Ursula provided, 50% of the material going into the trash is organics. And that's really kind of, I think, the larger focus at this point in time.
Okay, so that we probably can achieve more with organicker waste? So are we looking at maybe separating the garbage can, like Sunnyvale did?
We are not looking at that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore, please.
Sure, okay. I don't know if I have to divulge this, but I'm taking an environmental studies course right now. Last week, it was household hazardous waste, and this week, solid waste, so.
So timely.
I was shocked, yeah. So, yes, I was watching a video on one of the MRFs, and it was interesting. So I'm wondering, in terms of the landfills, are they all created equally, what we're looking at? And if they, if there are some differences for how they are constructed, if some of them are doing a better methane recapture, doing a better job with the leachate, anything like that? If you could come back and let us know, or if you already know about that? I'm curious about it. We did, in this course, look at all the landfills in the Santa Clara County. So, but they didn't really talk about the actual construction being different for them, or, you know, things of that nature. If you've got some information on that, that would help. And then with regards to the MRF facilities, if we could have a little bit of information about what's distinguishing one from another, that would be helpful. And I think, you know, while we have that, the green bin, maybe you have some thoughts about what is kind of keeping people from actually doing that separating? Because, and then the other part is, what happens when people don't separate their organics? When it goes to landfill? If you could talk about that, that would help. For why it's important.
So the organics going to the landfill today, what happens to them? So the main difference I think of with that is composting organics versus organics going to the landfill. And the landfill environment is anaerobic, and just that situation, that environment generates methane as opposed to a composting process, which generates more carbon dioxide. And methane is 84 times more potent than carbon dioxide. So they're both generating some greenhouse gases, but it's much worse in the landfill environment. And to the other questions, I mean, we could ask Peter if he knows a bit about, I know all landfills are not created equal. Some are newer, some are older, different technology, different lining. I just don't know those answers off the top of my head for the specific ones in our area. But we could include that, you know, request in the RFP, I would think, to describe their, the makeup of their facility.
So, thank you.
Mayor, council, Vice Mayor? Just a quick comment, yes, we will, as part of the RFP, be looking at the regulatory status, which is really the key, the key issue for the landfills, and checking in terms of their permits and status of all that.
So that was Peter Dibler, by the way, from HFNH.
Thank you, Peter. So, Councilmember Moore, are you okay with your questions? Okay, so my question is, this agenda is asked the council to approve for you to go out to get estimates, and you could come back with reports on different proposals, so we can, at that time, can decide what to do, right? Which one to pick with price, or materials, or how they're going to process, and how much? Will we have those detailed information?
Mayor, if I could interject here, thank you. So I want to be clear on the recommendation from staff. So we're looking at an increased focus on recycling. So with that, we wanted to be clear that that increases the cost to the residents and the businesses as we're doing that. It's still in alignment with our cap, but we thought, because there's a significant decision point and a cost increase, we wanted to check in with you to make sure that we're still in alignment in that direction. So our recommendation is to pursue the previous direction lined out in the Climate Action Plan. And we would structure the RFP and the evaluation of the RFPs in alignment with that. So we would be emphasizing the ability to recycle. And with that, we would sort of look a little bit less at the cost associated with that, because we know there's going to be an increased cost. So that's what we're asking for here, to make sure that we're in alignment as we go forward with that.
Okay, thank you. So I have no more questions. If council have no more questions, I'm going to open up for public comments, please.
Yes, Mayor.
Do you have any cards?
Yes, we have two speaker cards in house, and I see two hands raised on Zoom. Jennifer Griffin is first, followed by Rhonda Frye. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. Actually, I grew up with Los Altos garbage and had recology the whole time. I just had a couple of questions about this. I'm glad that you all are attempting to try to have a better plan about trying to capture more items that are recyclable, et cetera. I was just curious whether this would be come, if you all, I'm assuming, would contract, once you get your bids in, et cetera, if you would be contracting with one of these vendors? And are they, how is the contract with recology and the new vendor set up? Would we be billed through recology? Would a home in Cupertino receive two different bills? Would they be bundled together? And how does that affect the cost increase to the customer? I think that, I am a little bit curious about how that goes, because I understand that garbage contracts, I mean, coming here 23 years, we've had recology, I think it was Los Altos garbage for a while, but we've had various times that they've had to come in and rebid the contracts. And I'm just curious how that would be set up with this extended environmental setup here, et cetera. So if you all could comment on that, I would just, so that, I think it's important, especially when contracts, like ongoing with recology, et cetera, et cetera, it's good for the public to understand how the contracts are set up, because then they understand more of what's going on in the bidding process, especially when you have a longtime vendor like recology. Cupertino has dealt with them for many years. That way, then, the public is clued in on what to expect, and there are no surprises. So if you could talk about, after the bidding's done, how do they award the contracts? How is the actual contract set up between the new vendor and with recology? And then how is that reflected in the bill? And how much will the bill go up? So thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have Rhonda Frye, followed by Darcy Paul. Welcome, Jennifer, or welcome, Rhonda.
Thank you for an informative presentation. One of the things I'm wondering if you could add to the RFP would be a quality-of-service element. It's no fun having to wait for a dumpster, and to receive a dumpster, and it's no fun to have to wait to have one picked up. And also, the sort of the length of time and the charges that you'd have if the dumpster stays a longer time. So that's my ask, quality of service on dumpsters. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. Next, we have Darcy Paul. Welcome, Darcy.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Mayor Way, members of the City Council, how do you do? Nice to see you this evening. I wasn't going to speak on this item, but I actually came in to speak on a subsequent item. I heard this being discussed on my way in. And I did hear Councilmember Chow's questions with regard to plastics. And it made me really want to put in a plug for awareness of the fact that we really do have a very serious plastic contaminants issue worldwide. And if you'll recall, back when I was on council last year and mayor, we held a Mayor's Cup Challenge, it was an inaugural challenge, talking about the issue of microplastics. And these are not questions, I think, that are immaterial to the situation that you're looking at here. And a lot of the discussion that we had last year was about the various influences on the reality of what's happening, right? Because petroleum usage in vehicles is projected to go down for obvious reasons. But at the same time, the industry, right, fueled by a lot of motivational dollars, is wanting to output more of these materials. And how do they do that? Well, unbeknownst to a good portion of people, plastics are largely from petroleum products. And so if we think about that from an industry pressure without demonizing, but then also think about it from the perspective of the consumer, as well as the science, as well as policy, that's when we end up having these kinds of solutions that really become effective over time. So as pertains to something like this, if we're focusing upon the various things that we can do, even though most of these, perhaps by weight or organics, this is also an accumulative problem, right? Because what doesn't end up getting recycled often gets, you know, decomposed. And, you know, we wouldn't have thought it 30 years ago when we thought we had these brand-new shoes, or whatever they were, little covers on DVDs. But right now, they're degrading, and a lot of these things go out into our environment. These are very legitimate questions to be asking, and I hope that you receive them with an openness of mind and a willingness to take on those difficult questions, rather than trying to, so to speak, sweep them under the rug. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Darcy. And next, we will move to Zoom. We have two hands raised by Peggy Griffin and San R. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. I'm concerned with the increase, $8 per month, for 12 months, $72 a year. And that's only one utility. We've got electricity, gas, water, sewer, and now garbage. You can't look at this in a vacuum. You're impacting us all across the board. Please, the survey taken in 2019, since then, we've had layoffs. All utilities have been increasing. We're going into another recession. We're impacted, and it's not getting any better right now. The presentation stressed organics, not all the other recyclables. 50% going in landfills are organics. And that's bad, I understand that. Punishing everyone for actions by a selected group of people out of either ignorance or just not caring doesn't make sense. Rewarding people for getting it right? Educating, so that you can train them? I think that gets more benefit than charging us to do this. My husband and I, encouraged by our son and daughter-in-law, we focused on organics. And the city had sent a orange juice container and expected everybody to use it for the organics, and it didn't work. It leaked, it was just ugly. It leaked, it, it was just ugly. But we found something that hangs on a cabinet, a bottom kitchen cabinet, and there are, uh, bags that are compostable that, that line this little tub, it's like a little bucket, and it's very convenient, and we've done it, and it, and we've reduced our trash by a whole bag. And we have one of those small gray trash cans, so that's significant. But it took somebody saying, "Oh, you can use this," and there are bags to line it. Educate us. Show us what we can do to improve. Don't punish us with a, additional costs. Um, my ask is that you not increase the cost to the residents at this time. Educate, reward us. Have fun games where it's difficult to recycle. See how many people can get it right. Anyway, um, the increases mount up, please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. And our final speaker on this item will be San R. Welcome, San.
Thank you, Mayor Way and City Council. I'm glad to be speaking after Peggy, because I would have to say she said it better than I could. Uh, I feel like the City Council and City staff are out of touch with reality. We've had over 200,000 layoffs just since October alone, primarily in the tech industry, and the tech industry is all right in our backyard, right here in Silicon Valley. Five of the 11 most expensive cities in the U.S. are in California. The Bay Area has seen costs rise to the extent that we're paying $4,400 more due to inflation a year compared to what we were doing a year ago. Inflation is skyrocketing across the board. All of us are seeing the bills for PG&E and San Jose Water skyrocket. And I feel like the City Council and City staff are completely out of touch with realities. Furthermore, you're not considering the lower-income tratta of Cupertino. On the one hand, we talk about affordable housing, transitional housing, homeless housing, and all of these initiatives that are intended for equity. On the other hand, we talk about projects that go after higher utility prices, solving upper-class problems, ignoring the day-to-day challenges that people face. 26.7% of Cupertino is Indian-American. A vast majority of those are not U.S. citizens and have struggled for 15 years and still are not U.S. citizens, which means that they're living on a single income. Spouse cannot work. In this environment, with 67% of Cupertino being Asian-American, 27% being Indian-American, the vast majority being single-income, as well as a large percentage of seniors in the community, it is hard for me to understand how City staff makes these recommendations. Perhaps they don't live in the city and they don't have to pay for this. I don't understand how the council makes these suggestions that are completely out of touch with the residents. And I'm disappointed that our ex-mayor is also making the same suggestion. I agree with Peggy. It is important to educate, it is important to offer rewards for good behaviors, but do not penalize our low-income, poor Cupertino, our seniors, our single-income earners, and our laid-off tech professionals. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, San. And Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'd like to thank all the public comment, and let's especially recognize our immediate former Mayor, uh, Darcy Paul, thank you for coming. And, um, so, um, we're gonna close the public comment and go back to the council for a Do we have any discussions? Councilmember Moore, let's see your hands.
Sure. Um, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Way. Um, do we have any financial assistance, uh, at all for, um, garbage pickup?
We do. Recology offers a low-income discount that is available, and to the previous question, it will all be on the garbage bill. There will not be separate bills. So it will all be folded in.
Okay.
The same way it is now seamlessly with, you know, even though we have an agreement with a, a separate landfill, that's all on the, on the garbage bill.
Okay, and then when, when I'm looking over at, um, San Jose area, um, I've noticed that, uh, all of their yard waste goes out into the street, and they do a pickup right from the street, but they don't separate the, um, their, their solid waste out, um, so that all of the, the kitchen scraps and ev- uh, everything's going in there, and then you have a recycle bin for, to pull out your paper and plastic and all like that. Um, so have you, uh, looked at the, at what they're charging, um, as a comparison, um, for what, uh, we have for rates here, um, for a comparison?
Um, not yet, I guess would be the, the, the good answer, but yeah, San Jose is directing all their garbage to a high diversion facility to s- try to sort it all out. Um, that, you know, that facility could be one of the proposers, but we might, um, see if Peter is still on the line and if he has an idea of how rates compare.
Okay, uh, just quickly, um, so I, I really like the idea of individuals separating it out themselves, and that saves on cost. Um, but if we're, if we have a situation where people just actually are not doing it, um, then one way is to have some kind of enforcement, and, um, are you anticipating that happening?
SB 1383 actually requires us to enforce proper separation beginning in 2024, so we will be, uh, going out and trying to do enforcement. I mean, you know, there are 60,000 residents, so, you know, we're not gonna be at every 14,000 single-family homes every week, but we're gonna try to do our best to, um, you know, do outreach, education, flip lids, offer friendly feedback and encouragement. We're not gonna lead with, you know, citations or anything, we always wanna lead with education, but the state law does require us to enforce beginning 2024.
Okay, so that's, that's coming up. That's, wow, okay. Um, so with regards to that, do you anticipate there will be a, um, citation like, uh, like a parking ticket type of thing coming, um, at some point?
It's already in our code, um, to be ready to spring into action when, when we need it.
Okay, but will it result in that, some sort of a ticket type of thing?
It could. I mean, like I said, we always wanna lead with trying to reach out to the person and educate and offer a chance to improve and whatnot, but if that doesn't work, then yes, there will be a citation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Chow, please.
Um, so what other cities are currently using MRF?
Um, Sunnyvale, Mountain View, um, obviously San Jose channels through, I'm not sure about the West Valley cities. Peter may know, if we wanna have him join us again.
Yes, the West Valley cities are not, but Palo Alto is also processing material.
And San Francisco, right?
Right.
So do we have any, a comparison chart of the cost for garbage disposal, or including recycle, I mean, the whole cost between our city and other cities?
We do for where we are right now, but obviously as, as we fluctuate with this new.
Yeah, if that information can be provided, and that would be great. And, uh, also, would this MRF include, uh, maybe a place to drop off organics? What I find is, uh, I put my organics in this little bin, which has a lid that the city provide, it works great, however, I don't have yard waste every week since I don't have alone. So certainly for the weeks, I don't have any yard waste, there is no place for me to put my organics. So I would, then this kind of program offer place we can drop off organics, because...
I haven't heard of that for single-family, where you have a cart available. Um, it's certainly be something we could ask about. I did hear about it when multifamily didn't have access to that in another city, that the MRF there provided a drop-off, but where you have a cart, the hope is that you'll use it.
So with MRF, I can put my organic in the gray bin and not feel guilty about it? Is that...
Please don't.
You could feel less guilty, I suppose.
Because they will separate that out?
That would be, yeah, that would be the goal of the material recovery facility, to, to sort out the organics. Of course, organics...
We still recommend they go in the green bin.
Yes, that's gonna be a higher-quality material.
But my green bean usually, but my green bean, when it has no yard waste, I don't wanna put my organic in that, it's smelly.
Even in a little compostable bag?
But compostable bag has to go in there.
If I, if I could interject really quick, I think the time and effort for putting it in a, in a, in your green bin and putting your green bin out in the curb would far, um, be far less than the time and effort of driving it to a different location, so we would continue to recommend that you use the green bin.
Because the bag even, the, especially biodegradable bag, it leaks, so it's like messy.
Some people store their organics in the freezer and then put them in at the last minute. We, we could work with you offline on some troubleshooting if you want.
Okay, yeah. So when this comes back, I understand that we, um, staff wants direction to put sustainability as the priority goal, but could we also have options to, in terms of cost versus sustainability goal when it comes back? So we have some options to consider.
Our intent is to bring back a staff recommendation, and that's why we're here tonight. We wanna get your guidance early on so that we can do the evaluation and bring back a solid recommendation that aligns with what we think is correct, the cap, the Climate Action Plan, uh, and we're hoping that you can provide that direction tonight so that we can bring a solid recommendation to you for a contract award when we come back.
Really appreciate that you bring this to the council, um, early on to get direction, and, uh, I'm just wondering, in, in, there might be multiple providers and degrees of sustainability, maybe the cost difference will be five dollars a month, ten dollars a month, and so that if there is option, we always want to do good, but then we need to balance and need, uh, the cost. Um, I personally, I think the cost is small per month, but like some residents, some, they've, to them, it might not be, so we...
And that assessment is the good work that the staff will do in the course of issuing and evaluating the RFP, and it will be included, the summary of what we evaluated will be put into the recommendation when we bring it back. Uh, so we wouldn't be bringing back a menu of options for you, we'd be bringing back a solid recommendation of where we wanna go. And that's why we wanted to be proactive in what we think is, uh, is a key element, which is, do we wanna, do we wanna be a leader and, and advance our cap, um, or is cost a significant element, and we wanna, we wanna, uh, weigh that a little bit more in the evaluation. So that's where we're, uh, why we're here today.
Thank you. Um, do we have any council members who'd like to make some comments? Uh, Councilmember Foon, please.
To pick up on a comment from Councilmember Moore, i- is there, do you have any statistics on what, uh, you know, enforcement has generally produced in terms of compliance, or what educational activities have produced in terms of compliance?
So, so far with SB 1383, you know, we've, we've made sure everyone has their service available to them, which luckily we, we mostly had in place. We had some stragglers that we picked up, and everyone has service. We do focus more on commercial generators, 'cause obviously they're gonna have a, a larger amount, um, per a single generator. Um, so far, we've had good luck just, well, you know, we, we go out and educate, we look, educate and work with them, and, and we've had good success with bringing folks into compliance. It's an ongoing effort, so we, between Recology staff and our own staff, we're out looking in bins every week. Um, it's, especially with, uh, San Jose, you know, wanting everyone to put it in the garbage, and you have people commuting here to work, you know? I, I know it gets confusing for folks, so, uh, but we do have success. When we talk to people one-on-one, it works really well.
Thank you.
So, um, I'd like to make some comments. Um, we just had our Earth Day, and then all five high schools in our Fremont Union High School District had their separate Earth Day, and I was fortunate to attend one of them, and the speech I made is, Cupertino is taking meaningful action to reduce greenhouse gas emission and mitigate climate action change impacts. The city adopted Climate Action 2.0 in August of last year. This plan outlines the next generation of strategies to achieve a carbon-free city by 2040, and is comprehensive of all sectors of our local economy, including clean energy, transportation, zero-waste, adapting to climate change, and working with nature. I do think our city needs to take a lead and walk the talk and really work on our cap 2.0 and move forward in, um, reducing waste. It's, I've seen, you know, I know, uh, like, as a family, we try to separate the waste. Councilmember Chow, I, my garden only come every other week, so other, one week, my gar- my green bean will be empty. So what I do is, I put them in, in a, um, shopping, in grocery shopping bags, which are paper, so that contains the, um, you know, the waste, so it doesn't contaminate the, the, um, the green thing. And I do it on Monday, um, on the day that they're gonna pick up garbage, so that's my solution, 'cause, you know, you don't want the, the, the beans to be really dirty-smelled of food. So I think we can make an effort to, uh, really do it ourselves, and I am very pleased that, um, the City staff is recommending that we go forward and really be a leader in this area. So that's my comment, and do we have any other more comments? If, Councilmember Moore, you have, um, about a million and forty seconds.
Okay, um, thank you. Uh, Mayor Way, I agree, and I'd like to see as much, uh, diversion as we can possibly do. Um, I, but I am, uh, mindful and respectful for the, the individuals who are concerned about the, the costs. Um, so if there, if there's, there's like an optimal, um, solution for the, for the best we can do with the technology that we have right now, I, I'd be interested in hearing that, and whether or not there's some trade-off, um, for different MRF facilities which have a, uh, the more advanced technology, um, and also with regards to the landfill, if there's some landfills which are, um, actually doing a better job, um, than others. I, I don't know what the answer is to that, but I, I'm interested in, in hearing about it. Um, and while, you know, I mentioned I was taking this class, I remember being a kid going to the, the dump, and back then, it was a, it was an open, it was an open dump, no liner, nothing, and that's where most of them were like. So, um, I'm, I'm really glad to see that this has improved so much over the past, um, 30 and 40 years, so, thank you.
Any more comments? Uh, Vice Mayor Mohan, please.
Um, one comment. Uh, since there are several, uh, parties involved in it, there's the landfill owner, there's, uh, Recology, um, can you envision some, at some point, that maybe the landfill fees will go down because we are using it less? Or is that something that is not likely to happen?
Probably not likely. Um, and even as it is now, the, the market rate for landfill, just direct disposal to landfill, is a bit higher than what we're paying under our current agreement. So even if we kept disposing direct to landfill, we'd likely see a little bit of an increase just to come up to market on that. But if, are you asking more about, because we're, we'd ultimately be sending less to landfill, we're pulling more out?
Exactly.
Um, yeah, that's an interesting question. I, I think with the increased expense of going through the processing, I don't know if there would be a, a cost benefit, but that's something HF and H will help us evaluate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and I have one more question. So are public agencies, all the school districts are included in this plan, right?
The school districts have their own separate waste hauling agreements, so they have their own agreements with, uh, Recology.
Oh, I think if, um, we might wanna encourage our students to propose to the district and follow the Cupertino city's lead. So they are separates, all like, um, Fremont Union High School District, USD, and 40 of the ends, I do all have separate agreements.
Yeah, my understanding is each district has its own waste agreement, it just happens that Cupertino Union has Recology and, and Fremont Union. Um, I think they may be some and some with specialty, and anyway, it's, it's more complicated, but it's not under our franchise agreement, long story short.
Yeah, okay, thank you. We will inquire individually then. That's, uh, I have no more questions. If we don't have any more questions, may I entertain a motion, please? Um, Councilmember Moore?
Yes, I'd like to move the recommended action to approve the staff recommendation regarding the forthcoming request for proposals for garbage and construction demolition debris disposition services by incorporating the solicitation of options to process garbage for recovery of organic and other recyclable materials.
Thank you. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Foon, and any more discussions? If not, let's vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now we're, before we move number 13, shall we take a short break? Or let's take a five-minute break? Thank you.